All right, here we go. Let's do it. Alright, so number one, we have dydx. Okay, and then it's asking us to find y. So what direction are we going? Is that a derivative? Or is that? We have dydx.
I mean anti.
Anti-der. Exactly. So we know to go from there to there, and that's an anti. Um, then also remember, oops, sorry, that your equation has to be x is on one side, y is on the other. So if it's all mixed up like that, that's not work. So what we can do is bring the dx up, bring the y across. Yeah? So y squared, or y right now is multiplied, what will be when we bring it across? Right, so be divided by, let's just put a 1 up there. And then x squared, and then my dx. Hey then, from there, integral on both sides. Here and here. And then integral of 1 over y, what's that? That's one of your specials. Ln. Equals, other side, x squared would turn into what? That's the derivative, we're doing anti, so we want to power. 1 over x cubed, and then divide by the new power, be 1 over. Yeah? Let's see. Okay, then from there, we need to get y by itself, so next step would be to do what? Very good. Okay, now, if there was a number here in the front, or a negative, you'd have to get rid of that first, but then once the ln's there, you can. So we'll eat it here and here. And then we have y equals c e to the 1/3x cubed. Now, the other alternative, let's say that you didn't want to bring this d down, let's say you wanted to leave it up top. Then you would have this, the absolute value of y equals e to the 1/3x cubed plus c. And then how did we say we get rid of the absolute value bars here, do you remember? You put a plus or minus on the other stuff. So that's why I also like to move this d down, is that then you don't have to worry about putting a plus or minus. Because if you have a constant in the front, it could already be positive. So these are the two forms that your solution could be written in. Look at the way the question's worded, it says which one could be the answer, well then which one would match one of those? They didn't give us enough information to actually find the c, but which one is in that format? B has the plus 7 not in that. So could I pick B? Uh huh. Which one would I have to pick? The. Was it 2? So the 2 is the c, because remember, you can drop the c down. So that's where you would want to look and see if they don't have this version, they would have had this version. Usually they'll say on the AP test, they bring the c down. Good? Alright, try the next one. Says which of the following could be the solution to the differential equation, dydx equals 4x over y, where y of 2 is negative 2. So first thing we want to do is separate, so we're doing y is to the left, x is to the right. So we'll have, what on the left side when we bring this out? Ydy equals 4xbx. And a growth integral, what's the integral of y? There we go, 1/2y squared, other side?
2x.
Uh huh, plus. Okay, and then next step? Uh huh. And then when you times by 2, remember the c just kind of absorbs it, you don't have to change it. So 2 times 1/2y squared is just y squared. 2 times 2x squared is a 4x squared, and then still plus the, then next step, take that. And I have y equals the square root of 4x squared plus c. What did we do wrong? When you take the square root, remember you have to keep that in front. So plus minus, what have to do. And then remember the reason why that matters, because when I pick my ordered pair up here, what do they want y to be equal? That's the y value that's going to tell me to be connected to the front, yeah? Alright, so we're going to plug this in, so my 2 is my x value, negative 2 is my y value. Well then, I'm going to actively pick the negative on the outside so that they match. And remember, you have to pick it now, because what happens when you square? Yeah, you're going to lose it. So when I square negative 2, and when I square the negative square root, those negatives will go away. But I remember that I'll take. Uh, then from there, we have negative 2 squared is 4. That would just be 2 squared is 4 times 2 is 8 plus c. And then, uh, from there, what will you do next? Oh wait, is that right? No, that's wrong. What is? It was 16. This would be a 16. Because it'd be 2 squared is 4, and then times another 4 would be 16. Now technically, what happened there was you had 16 plus c and then squared. But that's why they just keep on it. And then minus the 16 cross with your c. Negative as well. So then which of the answers do we want? C or d? C, c has the negative in the front. Um, the other thing behind that, that's the domain, okay, which I think is good to remember. How do you find domain if it's a square root? They put this on the free response a couple times. What can the stuff inside the square root not be? Can't be negative. So if this is your general, or if this is your particular solution, 4x squared minus 12, then you automatically know that this stuff in the middle has to be greater than or equal to 0, because I'm not allowed to square root anything negative. And then if you add the 12 across, divide by 4, and then take the square root, that's where this came from, that's your domain. You would do 4x squared greater than 3 to 12. Divide by 4. X squared greater than 3, which means x is greater than. Now, a lot of times, they don't put that in the multiple choice. How many? Are you saying? Okay. Not saying, I have to show it since I could say, I could say. Well, we're in the middle, so, and I like recording, but I love you, I love to see you.
I can't watch.
As long as you're not going to talk with me. Alright, good? Questions on it? Alright. Alright, so we're going to get into some slope field, so let's just kind of review how to do this. So remember, your slope field, okay, should match the shape of your general solution. And when you plug in any ordered pair, this slope segment should be facing the direction of that value. So for example, uh, Matt, pick an easy order.
0, 1.
0, 1, perfect. So 0, 1 would be here. Ish. And this line is downhill, and at 0, 1 here, this line is uphill. So if I plug in 0 and 1, then I can kind of see, did I get a positive or a negative value? Now, if I plug in 0, 1 to this particular value they gave us here. Well, yeah, I have 0 over 1, which is 0. So now I know, I shouldn't be have a positive slope or a negative slope, what should I have at 0, 1? Okay, which means I can eliminate these, okay? Sure, yeah, you just put them on the ground. So these guys are both valid, yeah? Okay, so we have, uh, three more left down here, so pick another test point. Uh, let's go with sometime, what would you pick? Okay, 1, 2, so 1, 2 would be uphill here, and 1, 2 is downhill. So let's see what happens with that dydx, that 1 comma 2 equals x over y would be 1 over 2, which means we know it has to be the positive one, then what can we eliminate now? D. So we still have 2 left. Um, so do you want to pick one, Mary? Which one would you want to pick? Negative 1, 1, okay? Negative 1, 1 would be here, downhill, and then negative 1, 1 here is also downhill. So let's think about, we want to try to pick one where they're not going to come out to be the same. Um. They're looking pretty similar, where are they different? Downhill, downhill. Okay, do we see this diagonal right here? Yeah? And then do you see this diagonal right here? Why would those diagonals be there? If this were the correct answer, what have, what are, what is true about all of the points on this line? 1, 1, 2, 2, 3, 3? Huh? Right, but if I divided 1 by 1, 2 by 2, 3 by 3, what's my slope going to be every single time? 1, what about if I take negative 1, 1? Negative 2, 2? Negative 3, 3? What would the ratio always be? Negative 1, so that's why this is negative. So that will tell me that I'm. Because anytime your x and your y are the same, they're going to end up dividing to 1 and giving you that perfect. And that one was a little bit harder, usually if you just pick enough test points, you can eliminate all your answers. But does that make sense? You can. So think about, okay, let me, let me, uh, show you why c has to be wrong. If I plugged in dydx to 1, 1, what would I get? I would get 1, right? What about if I plugged into 2, 2, what would I get? 1, and are these equal steepnesses? No. No. What about if I go to 3, 3? Now, it's still getting steeper, even though 3 divided by 3, 2 divided by 2, 1 divided by 1, those should all be the exact same steep. Does that make sense? So on this diagonal, where your x and your y's are equal, dydx would equal 1 for that, the whole way across, but I can see that that's not what's happening. I can see that they're actually getting steep. So we know that's not. But that one was a little bit tricky. Okay, so turn the page. And why don't you try the next one? So see if you can at least eliminate maybe 1 or 2. Try to take test points that are in different quadrants. And then remember, you can look through your verticals and your, uh, coordinates.
Y'all have children, so? Luckily, it was fine. Friday was rehearsal all day. Well, she's like 3 different characters. Or, oh.
Uh, can somebody eliminate one answer choice for me and tell me what point you used? A, okay, what point did A not fit for? So 2, 2, okay, and then, that makes sense, and then 3, 3, 4 divided by 4, what should those all be? Okay, good. Now, another thing to try is try a different quadrant, like what about negative 2, negative 2? What's negative 2 divided by negative 2? Positive one, and it's facing the wrong way, right? Okay, so what's another one that we can eliminate? Let's try that same point on the ones that are left. So for negative 2, negative 2, what would this come out to be? Positive or negative?
Positive.
Negative 2 squared is positive. And then negative 2 squared is another positive, and which way is it facing?
Negative.
So we can get rid of that one, too. So once you pick a point that's kind of eliminating some options, try it on a couple of answers and see. Is it D? What about this one?
The positive. Negative, negative, positive.
Because when you cube the negative, it keeps the negative. And you plug in the negative down here, but negative divided by a negative is a positive, so now we have another one that we can eliminate, because my line segment's pointing downhill, it should be uphill. Okay, so out of the 2 that are left, how is d going to come out, positive or negative, for that same?
Negative.
Negative, what about? Okay, so we have 2 options left, and we have to pick, I would say usually pick a different one. So if you already tried one, then pick something else. So let's.
Include like each at each interval, I'm thinking it's the. But is it, is it E? Let's see.
So let's pick, uh, let's do 1 negative 1 right here, which way is it facing on the slope field? 1 negative 1 should come out positive, so let's see how our answers come out. So if I do 1 squared on top over negative 1 on bottom, that's going to come out to be negative. So then we know it's not, it was close, but then it would have to be. And so then for that one, I'd have, my x would be a 1 squared over a negative 1 squared, which would come.
What does it look like?
Uh, you'd have to solve it to find out. But it wouldn't be like an easy pair of function. But that's all. But you wouldn't even like. Oh, it's broke, it'd be like. I'm nothing. And actually, you can do this slope field generator online and check whatever you need. I don't know what that. Next one. Thank you, thank you so much, that's right. Um, okay. Next one says bacteria in a certain culture increase at a rate proportional to the number present. If the number of bacteria doubles in 3 hours, how many hours will the number of bacteria trip? Okay, so this one's kind of tricky, but I want to walk you through it just because we have to do it sometimes. So it says right here, bacteria increase at a rate proportional to the number present. So what would we call the rate bacteria are increasing at? What would we call that? D? E. DT. So that would be bacteria are increasing at a rate. And then it says proportional to how many are there. That would be, remember proportional is your AP. A little bit, we did this right before. So then think about, we want to get back to population, we have the rate population increase. So we're going to separate, what needs to move to the left side, what needs to move to the right side?
I've been just talking for hours, though, there's no time variable.
Uh, t is your time.
I didn't.
P to the left, and what's going to the right? DT. So my dt is going to go this way, my divide by p is going to go to this way. So now I have 1 over pdp, and then kdt.
It's k constant.
K is a constant. So then what would the integral of 1 over pb? Lnb, and then what would be integral of kb, k is a constant? Kt, which would normally be an x, but in this case. And then plus the, you hear me or you're chilling? Oh, what's that? Um. I don't know, let me tell you, do you have, what happens? Okay, Paul, he, I'll have to talk to Victor, but I know he's going to. But I'll let you know, we'll eat on you. Okay, then from there, we're going to get from the ln by. So then we have p equals c e to the kt. Now, if you remember. Basically, yeah. If you remember when we did this in class, we had said anytime it says that your bacteria is proportional to itself, you're going to end up getting this, this is exponential growth. Okay, now look what it says, the bacteria doubles in 3 hours. So let's say that at 0, I have 100% or 100 whatever back to. Well then, if it doubles in 3 hours, what would my next order give? It doubles in 3 hours, so my time would be 3, and then it was doubled to 200. So from there, I have 2 ordered pairs, I have 2 unknowns, my k and my c, and I can find this, which one should I start with, which ordered pair?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because what happens when I plug in a 0 to my time?
Makes the whole e, or it makes e to, e to the 0 is 1.
Yeah, 0 times k is 0, then e to the 0 is 1, so then I have 100 equals the. Okay, then also remember, you should have learned in precal that number in the front, if it's in this form, that's always your initial amount. So now I know this much, p equals 100e to the kt. What's my next step after that?
In 3/14.
Plug in 3/14, and what's supposed to happen to my population, it's supposed to double to 200. So I'd have 200 equals 100e to the k times 3. And then we're just solving for our k, so that we have a.
If I have 100 across, meaning 2 e to the kt.
Okay, now, sometimes people will say, well, wait, how did you pick 100? Think about, if you doubled, whatever this is, to get your new y value, in this step, when you divide, what will always come out to be? 1, 2, 2. So if I had said I want 5 bacteria, and then I doubled it to 10. In this step, when I did 10 by 5, I can still get 2, just like right now. Okay, and then from there, I have e to the k times 3, which is like 3k. So that will help on both sides. And then we know that 3k is ln of 2, then k would be what? Ln 2 over 3. Now, I'm going to write that, I'm sorry, so ln of 2. Okay, I'm going to keep that as a third ln 2, just.
Let's see, ln both sides.
Mm-hmm, to get rid of the e, and then we have 3k equals ln of 2, then divide by 3, and k is ln. Oh. You good? So there is only 2. Okay, so remember, when you're dividing here, you're dividing the whole thing by 3, you can't divide inside that. Oh.
But ln, it's locked together, it must have.
ln is of 2, yeah, 2 is inside.
Really? No, that's not one of the answer choices, right, because we're not done.
Oh, what? Okay, so then, so then now I have my complete equation, it's p equals 100e to the kt, where my k is a third bln of 2 times.
Now you're solving for t. Why would you do that?
Okay, so now look what it says, what was the question? What do we want the bacteria to do? To triple, but if we started with 100, and we want it to triple, then what y value will we use up here to solve? 300, because we don't want it to double, we want it to triple, then you put a 300 here, and then basically just repeat that process. So honestly, this is a lot more precal than it really is. So we divide the 100 first, what would we get? 3, and no matter what numbers we had picked, that would have happened. Then we have e to the 1/3 ln of 2t, um, and then what could we have done from there? Uh huh, ln both sides. So the ln and the e are gone, we have the ln of 3 equals. Uh, we'll do the ln of 2 all over 3 times t, then what would our last step be to get? Yeah, divide this, which means we're going to multiply by 1.
Oh, so it's 9 ln over 2. Okay, so d for e.
Oh wait, no.
Okay, because when you, oh, it's 27, 3 times, no, 3 times 2 is 9.
Okay, so hold on, we're multiplying, we have ln of 3, and then we're times e by 3 over ln 2. You can't put this in here, right? The 3 is in the ln. So you would have to take.
You don't combine those? That's weird. Okay, that makes sense.
Because think about, just like with like a square root.
I guess the way we wrote it, I keep seeing it as ln times 3, and not like, yeah, ln of 3.
ln. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That one was kind of, but I feel like, in general, the only calculus you did in the whole problem was here to here, and then everything else.
You don't get those?
I know, yeah, yeah.
Wait, so are all these questions from one of the AP tests?
Um, this one is actually in like a practice packet that College Board put out, I've never seen one this hard on. Because usually for AP, they try to test like how, something precal. And this one, 90% of the solving is more precal. But like the first 2 that we did, those. Um, okay, so let's do, out of the 2 that are left on this page, let's do 6. Okay, so what would you start with? We have dydt, dydt, not dydx. Okay, and it says y is negative 1 when t is 0, what is the value of t when y is negative?
I'm going to point.
No, it's basically a different letter, so like if it's dydx, this wouldn't be a t, this. So it's just kind of like, usually dydx is if it's like a slope of a graph. Or if it's dydt is like per second, like if it was like a real life, like a particle. Okay, so what are we doing first?
Dydt.
Uh huh, so separate your letters. So my y is going to come down, do I have to move the 2 with it? No, just leave it. So it'll be 1 over y, negative 2dt, then what?
Algebra.
Integral of 1 over y goes to? Lny, technically without two value bars, but it's multiple choice, so maybe they never know. Negative 2 goes to what? Negative 2x?
2x.
E plus? C? Okay, then from there, what do we do next? So then we have y equals, let's drop the c down, so it'll be c e to the negative 2t. That's your general equation, what info do they give you to find your particular?
Y equals negative 1, let's keep it to 0.
So y is negative 1 when t is 0, so it's the e to the negative 2 times 0. Well, but now we know e is 0, that's just a y basically, and then our c is. So then let's reform this, let's rewrite it with that number plugged in. So it would be negative 1e to the negative 2t. Okay, see, if you can do the last step by yourself, it says what is the value of t, where y would be negative? What are you doing? Uh huh, and then solve for the t. So basically, they're having you do the general, find the particular, and then set it equal to a specific value.
What do they mean?
Don't want? Okay, so what might we do first?
Divide the negative 1 over, just make.
Okay, so now we have positive 1/2 and positive 1. So we have 1/2 equals e to the negative 2t, then what? Then what? And then from there, that gives you negative. And then from there, that gives you negative two T equals the L N of a half. And then divide by negative two.
Oh, exactly, that's why it doesn't make any sense. That's why I'm stuck, I'm like.
Okay, we can do it. Come back to right here where we have this, we had one half, this is tricky. Uh, negative two T, okay, let's go back to here, so we wanna take the L N, normally that would be the right step. Okay, but what if we rewrote our E to the negative two T? We pulled it into the denominator, then what would happen with the negative that we're seeing up here? So here's another way to, never mind, I'm gonna stick with that one. So let's pull this down, so now we have one over two equals one over.
You don't have to split both sides if you flip one side?
Well, we're not flipping one side, we're just using the negative. It's already, the negative is. And now from here, I can split both sides and put the ones both on top, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or think about like your cross multiplying, a lot of people like that better, what's E to the two T times one? E to the two T, and then what's two times one? And then from there, our next step would be to L N both sides, and then divide by
Why are you doing those things?
But now you know what to do with.
You know, that's why we're.
But it won't be hard on the AP test, we know it now.
Yeah, Steve Matthew, that's right. Okay. Um, take a look at the next one, I don't wanna necessarily do it, but what are they saying if they say the slope is this? What does that mean? Okay, the derivative, which is what? Which is?
What do you mean, D F?
Y D X X. Okay, so they're basically giving you the D Y D X part, but they're calling it a slope. So you would just need to know like, oh, that's the same, and then you'd still separate, you'd still solve it. Um, no, because you, you, so when they say the slope, they're talking about a tangent line. So they could say the slope of a tangent line to the curve is blah, 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 but it doesn't have to be a line, it could be a curve. But remember, how do I find the slope of a curve? I have to take derivative. Okay, so do y'all wanna try that one or no? Good? Okay, so let's go to the next one, go ahead and separate that one for me.
This one is in front of elementary school, right? This is for anyone who comes. So they can hold the door this time.
I just wanna see. Okay, I picked another little doozy here, but it's gonna be great, what do we know we need to? Okay, the Y, it's on the bottom, where's it gonna move to? It'll be on the top, so I'll have Y D Y, and then on the other side, my D X is gonna move to the top over here. Okay, I want you to think about, did I ever teach you how to integrate a quotient? Did we do that?
No.
No, it's not a thing. So instead, we need to rewrite our E, not in a quotient, how can we do that? What can we do, the exponent, make it not make, turn your X squared negative, so now I have negative, negative X squared. And now we can do it. So we can't do it as a quotient, there's no quotient rule for antiderivatives. But if you pull your E to the X squared up, now it's E to the negative. And now we can do use. So what would we pick as our U? And actually, let's do this side first. What would the integral of just the Y? Y squared and then divide by two, so one half Y squared. And on this side, we're gonna do stuff, now what would we choose? For our Q, it has to be inside some. Negative X squared. And then what's the derivative of that D U D X? Negative two X, then remember I times my D X up, and I divide by negative two X now. Right, happy over negative. Make sense? Okay, then we're ready to come back and plug in, remember my negative X is chilling in the front right now, but that has to be there. For the step where I plug in the D U over negative two X, what has to happen? The X's have to cross out, and then what kind of one half, a positive one or a negative one? So then really, that right side just comes out to be a half integral E to the D U. What's the integral of E to the U? So we have one half E to the U plus C. Don't put the plus C up top or do anything there. And then I'm gonna put my negative X squared back, now you can wait and do that later if you want, but I'm just gonna do it now, so we're, I'm gonna bring this down as well. So what we have is one half Y squared. One half E to the U, which is a negative X plus C, what would we do next? Times by two. Which is gonna essentially cross out both of your halves. And then what will you do after that? So I get Y equals plus or minus the square root of E to the negative X squared plus C. And then why don't any of their solutions have a plus or minus? What are they telling you right here? What is your F of X times if I must be? That means you know you need to choose the part. But now also notice, they gave you the point, but if this is the AP test, you don't even really have to, like, which one does it have to be, you already know. Has to be D, because they have the positive square root, just like we need. The C ends up being a three, but who cares, and then they have the E to the negative X squared. That make sense? Um, okay, uh, let's do, we're not gonna do all of this solving on this one, but let's just start out with part A, equation of a tangent line, what do we need? Point the slope, what do we have for the point? One, zero, and where will we find the slope? From the D Y D X, because remember, D Y D X is a slope of a. So from there, I would do D Y D X. Vertical line, make sure you're labeling one comma zero. And then E to the Y would be zero. And then my X is a one, so I'd have three times one squared. Which is? And then either the zero is a one, so I have one times three minus six. Which is negative. Okay, then from there, we're gonna write our ordered pair, we have our point right here, sorry, I mean, equation or tangent line. Y minus zero, negative three, X minus. And then, is that all we have to do? Okay, good, so it says, write the equation, the tangent line, we did it, then use the tangent line to approximate, we need to plug that. So your one point two is getting though. Okay, what is one point two minus one? Point two, what is point two times negative three? And if you don't know, literally just leave it, it's fine. If it's a, if it's a multiple choice, you might have to do it, but if it's for your response, it appears. But the point being, you still get full credit for that, full credit for this, so if it ends up being like a weird, like two sevens times point one, just. Okay, um, and then part B says is your tangent line over under the actual value? Okay, how do you know, if you remember, the tangent lines over under your. That's for remon sums, for a tangent line, it has to do with concavity, draw me like a cubic, so this is part A, we're done. Okay, but for part B, draw a cubic, draw a tangent line on the part of the graph that's concave down. Where is the tangent line gonna fall if your graph is concave down? It's gonna end up being above it, right? So, so this is the section that's concave down. And your tangent line is over and over estimate. Okay, versus, what about the section of the graph where it's concave up, where is your tangent? It'll be an under estimate. I'm gonna put an X here in the middle, so that's where the concavity switches, but when your graph is concave up, your tangent line will fall. And if you think about the graph, then it kind of makes sense, that depending on which way the graph is bent, that's gonna determine tangent line itself, okay, so now remembering that, we covered that like long, long ago. Okay, what do you think you would need to do to answer part B? They wanna know, is the tangent line too big or too small? We have D Y D X, but we need to know about. Then what would we have to do to take the the derivative again, which would give us the second derivative? And then also, let's go ahead. Yeah, so we're gonna have to plug it back in. So if I needed to take the derivative of this again, to know about, what rule? Uh, product quotient chain. Because look, you have this, it's this, that's gonna be product. So my U is E to the Y. My V is three X squared minus six X. Then I'm gonna take the derivative of both of those parts. And whenever it's a Y thing, do you remember what you have to put at the back? Like when I take the derivatives? So E to the Y, the derivative is the Y again, but then I have to have this Y. Okay, then for my V prime, that one will at least be easy, what is it? So times two times three, V six, power of that one to the X. And then minus six X would just be a minus. Okay, and now let's write our second derivative. So D Y D X equals derivative of that is E squared Y D X squared equals. And then we do this times this, plus this times this. So it'd be E to the Y six X minus six plus E to the Y, D Y D X three X squared minus. Now, we don't care about the concavity everywhere, we just care about the concavity where we did the tangent line. So what was the ordered pair that we did the tangent? What was that specific ordered pair? One, zero, and not only do we know it was at one, zero, but what was the D Y D X, and then we know everything to plug in. So my point is one, zero, and then I D Y D X with the negative. So then if I plug all that stuff in here, then I can see like, oh, it's a positive or it comes up. Okay, because remember, your D Y D X is gonna change right about that. So I have E to the Y, which is what? E to the zero, and let's label it E squared Y D X squared at one, zero equals. So E to the zero is just a one, and then when I plug in a one here, what's gonna happen with the six minus six? So that whole term basically eliminates itself. Okay, then I have another E to the Y, which is another E to the zero, which we know in our minds is one. And then D Y D X was a negative three that I'm plugging in here. And then what will this come out to be if I plug in a one to that? Now, I would stop there, just think about the sum. This crap is zero, two negatives times a positive, what's the value? It's gonna be a positive, and if it's positive, what's the concavity? Concavity is up, so the tangent line is. That make sense? So then, Y is concave up around one, zero. And tangent line All good? Okay, in part B, so what it's saying is, is your tangent line over under the actual value? So it's basically just saying, like, think about, if my real value is here, my tangent line would have measured down. Because remember, your tangent line is not perfect, it's only perfect at that one spot. And then it kind of veers off, so my estimation on the tangent line would have been under where the real. Okay, and then the other thing that we didn't get to, but think about, if your E to the Y ends up on the bottom, what trick would you have to do to integrate it for part C? That we've done that twice, so like when I separate this for part C, I would have one over E to the Y D Y. And then I would have three X squared minus six X C X. We're not gonna actually do it, but what would you, how can I integrate that? You can't with E on the bottom, and how can you bring it up? Put a negative on that. In the exponent, so you would first divide the E to the Y down, and then you would be like, oh, wait, I can't, there's no quotient rule, remember? So then you would say, okay, well then why do you rewrite that X, E to the negative Y, Y? And then whatever, three X squared. That make sense? And what would you need to integrate this, since it's not just a Y? What would you need to use? Make sense? Because the only thing you wouldn't have to use it for is if it's E to the X, or E to the Y, or E to the T. Uh-huh, yep.